Motion. I'd like to begin a motion to adopt a acting chair for this meeting.
Second.
Mr. Bowden.
What am I, what am I voting on?
I don't know, what am I doing?
Can I name myself?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Motion to name myself as acting chair.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See how easy that was?
Perfect.
Now you're standing. He was so close, ten yet so far away.
I release the second. I second the release.
I second the release.
Someone make a motion to approve the agenda?
It's been done.
I wait to, we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright. Good afternoon. So today I wanted to go over some parking updates that will need to be done if we're moving to a kiosk versus the individual metered spaces. So I have a presentation together to go over some of the survey results that our consultant had given us. And then steps for implementation on what needs to be updated. So it include the traffic code and then the recommendation for kiosks that Mohammed and Tina from Traffic were gracious enough to help me do some research on. So just a little background again, Fishbeck was the one that completed the car counts along with lengths of stay. They also mapped out, mapped it all out with GIS data and also did a public feedback survey. So in here I've got some of the survey results. You can find the full survey on our website. Some of them that I picked out from the survey included what time people typically were downtown, where, or yeah, where do they park? How do they prefer to pay and who should be paying for the parking? Most people believe that the city should with taxes. The next couple of slides are occupancy maps, so the blue means that they're not very full. But the first picture up there on the left side is 10 o'clock in the morning and then noon is in the middle and 2:00 PM is on the right side. And then these ones show at 4, 6, and 8. So you can see around 4 and 8 o'clock, or no, 6 and 8 o'clock, they get a little bit more red and congested around the convention center. Some of the suggestions that the consultant had given us was to update our parking technology. So do pay by plate and then use the kiosks or have the option for text to pay or QR codes for payments. Create a capital parking maintenance plan for the parking ramps, reduce the size of the enforcement area and change the hours from, change hours to 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM and potentially offer 90 minutes of free parking. Currently, the downtown parking area is all in the yellow where we have metered spaces. And what they were suggesting was to reduce it to only metered spaces being in the light blue. The purple is three hour parking, so there's not a meter there, but we would have our, that would be enforced three hour time limit. And then the other ones would just be, the red is just be monitored areas, but no time limits. So then that leads us to our discussion today, which would be how we are going to implement it. So in order for some of us, or for, order for some of this to go through, we need to update our traffic code for parking meters and parking ramps. And I provided those in your council packets on the different updates. Tina, do you want to talk over what Mohammed had put in here or do you want me to cover it? Okay. He had added definitions in the parking meter section about what a, what metered parking is, what a multi-space meter is, the parking zones, parking fees, time limits, et cetera. You can read those in the, in the red, red lined version. So there'd be multiple updates just to update from, I believe it said, single spaced meters or individually, individual meters to just parking meters. And then some other parts that we would need to update would be when the hours of enforcements are for the ordinance. And let's see, if we wanted to add anything in how we are going to be applying the revenue that is received. Currently, there is a section in there, but it was repealed in 1988, so there hasn't been anything in there since. And then updating citation fees and updating the rates that we'd want to use and if we want to have any free parking. And we also need to update rate fees for the parking ramps. And if we're going to offer any free parking in the parking ramps, how, what times those would be at or what the length of time would be. And then if, for sure for today, like if the discussion on rate changes doesn't work, for sure, we would like to at least reduce the enforcement areas so that any of the meters currently before the kiosks, if we are able to go and get kiosks, any of the meters that might be non-functional in that blue area of that enforcement, we could take from other areas and put in that and so that way we have working meters until we can get something else implemented. And then, do you have any questions so far? My next couple of slides are about the kiosk recommendation. So I didn't know if we wanted to just go all the way through the slides and then talk about where the rates are, okay?
One quick question. What's the, the current timeframe of enforcement of the meters? I know it ends at five, but when's it start?
Nine to five.
Nine to five, okay. I just want to make sure when I was looking at that, so thank you.
Yep. So the kiosk that we had determined was most cost efficient was from IPS. And they would, they have a bid out on Sourcewell that we would be using or piggybacking off of. So for the 21 multi-space pay stations, shipping and installation, it was going to be $162,000, a little over that. And then roughly $13,000 a month for reoccurring charges, which some of them were like updating the license plate reader, secure wireless gateways, ability to use coupon codes, so we could potentially offer like for jury parking, make it, have a contract with the county or district court for parking to give the jurors a code to use instead of them paying, so that would be an option. But the evaluation process that we used is, we had a goal to update the kiosks to improve the parking management, enhance user convenience, optimize revenue and show down, show that downtown Waterloo is progressive and welcoming. So the objectives for improvement included streamlining the payment process, having efficiency in collection for the revenues, flexible payment options, reducing maintenance, improving durability, being able to monitor the performance of each of them, and then ability to set up for special events. The criteria we use for each vendor included them being reputable, widely used, having up-to-date technology, having a management system, reporting, having a collection system, enforcement, costs and references. The four solutions that we had looked through were T2, IPS, Flowbird and Hotspot. T2 was the meter recommendations that Republic or Reimag, where are you guys now? Reimaged? Okay, Republic Parking had given us, and then we had also sought out a couple more that were on Sourcewell or State bid so that way we wouldn't have to go through the whole process of putting out an RFP. Some of the desired features that we had asked them to provide information on, it's a very long list. So overall, we wanted cost effective, easy to manage, improved enforcement and user friendly. Those were our top four. And then for costs, we had the T2 through, a Sourcewell bid was 177 through Republic, it was over 221,000. IPS was the lowest, not sure why this is different than the previous life, but 161, 6959 was what they had quoted us. Flowbird was just a little bit under the T2 and then Hotspot varies because they were more of a, a management system that would work with any of the different kiosks. So then we went further and checked into IPS, got some references from different cities and were able to do a couple demos with them to see what it would, how the whole system functioned. The IPS MS3 pay stations are what they had suggested. It does have both touchscreen capabilities and a keyboard, so if it's cold outside, you don't have to take your gloves off, you can use keyboard instead of having to use a touchscreen monitor. We also have the option to use dollar bills or coins if we want to, or we can eliminate that option from it if we didn't want to use or have the ability for cash. And then two of their references were from Cincinnati, Ohio or Deadwood, South Dakota. And that's all I have for that.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for your work on this. I know that you've taken the lead on this and it's a little outside of finance, so I really appreciate it. As we all know in council, this is something that I've pushed for a while, but this fits into our strategic city goal of having a smart city, being able to control this from a centralized point, be able to account for the dollars that are coming in through parking, be able to see where people are actively parking and then reducing the size, the footprint of this, of our current parking situation, allowing us to have up-to-date technology. So I am very in favor of moving forward. I remember at the last, the last time we spoke about this was with John Fishbeck when he was here. And at that point, council was pretty positive about moving forward with his recommendations as presented. I'm looking forward to hearing what people have to say today, but I just, this is wonderful. This I think moves our downtown forward in ways that we need and it gives our organizations like Main Street an opportunity to reach out to businesses and say, hey, here's proof the city's actually doing something to help you out, which we are, but it's just really obvious with this particular plan. I had one question, timing. So we are able to move forward, when can we actually order these things and get them here?
You know, do you know what they had said for beat out time?
No, I think, one question, perhaps, yes.
I don't have that information currently, but I can find out.
Excuse me, thank you. Mr. Mayor. So the 13,000, you originally said that, that we, we had some, maybe some downtown bond money for the kiosks, we could fund that. Where does Republic fit in when we're, when we are, when we have a $13,200 monthly cloud fee?
So that would be on top of what we pay them to do our enforcement.
Right now, we're, we're breaking even or just a little bit above even.
It kind of fluctuates each year, so.
Right, once we're up, one we're down.
Right.
So how, how do we make up the difference?
That would be made up in our citation fees, it could be made up in changing the parking rates. Currently, it's a quarter for most of our parking areas. I know John had suggested that we increase it to a dollar, but that was after giving so many minutes of free parking. So that would, that would need to be where the discussion would have, to happen.
And, and that's where I really need to see the nuts and bolts on, on the different rates, on, on how we, how we figure out that, that we're going to actually break even. The other thing is, if we move our timetable from personally at maybe 8 o'clock to 7 at night instead of 10. And the only reason I say that is that if you live downtown and you're parking, you come in and park on the street and parking enforcement doesn't start until 10:00 AM, they can actually stay in that spot till 11:30. Before, before they, before they get a ticket.
Right.
So that, that could really tie up parking downtown if, if the residents down there decided that, well, I don't start, enforcement doesn't start till 10 and I got an hour and a half of free parking. So that, that's logistical, that's something that I think needs to be worked out also.
Correct.
You know, I like the idea of shrinking the boundaries. We've got a lot of dead meters out there and we've got a lot of areas that we're not really enforcing anyway and around, you know, so I'm, I'm just morking. I'm, I'm okay with the, with the 90 minutes, I'm okay moving to kiosks. Evidently, the technology that we have on one of the Republic vehicles that has that, that equipment on the top, that that's not compatible with this, that we have to do.
It would need to be upgraded regardless of what system it do.
So now we're going to, we're going to move to plates. And it makes it a lot easier because you can't, you can't hopscotch your way around downtown and keep moving for your free 90 minutes. What about the people that, that, that buy parking passes?
Those are for the garages only, so they would still get, have passes that would be issued by Republic. So they would still, we'd have to determine if those, if we were going to change the rate fees on those as well.
But what, no, I'm talking about where we pay monthly, like you put it on your, on your mirror.
Right, they should have that information in their system, right? Don't you, you like?
We don't have any passes like that for on-street parking, it's only in the garages.
Oh, I thought that's what those passes we got. Okay, so that, how does that work when the city issues those things out to like apartment heads and?
So right now, they're having to just check the hang, for the hang tags. Most of them are parking in the same place every day, so we've kind of gotten familiar with where those are parked. But even with checking the plates, that's something they're going to have to look for.
So, quick question, when they, when they're driving by with those scanners, do they have to physically get out and write a ticket? Or since we've got their license, do, do we send them a ticket?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the LPR unit, I think you can put permits in so we can get that information from the city on who has those permits?
No, 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 what I'm, what I'm asking is, is that, let's say you're driving down and this person's been there for two hours.
Right.
And we're, and we're going to get them, and, and the license plate scanner picked them up that they've been there for two hours.
Right.
Does that, does that?
I'm going to let you talk to him.
Does your employee, does your employee get out and write the ticket or do we just, or now that we've got their, their plate and stuff, do we send them a ticket?
Thank you, council, mayor, council members. Bruce Campbell, I'm the territory manager for Republic Parking. Actually, we can do this either way, that's a choice that we have. So if the desire is to, you know, put the violation on the windshield, we can continue to do that or we could mail them. You know, that's a trend that has started in some other cities and that's a, that's a policy decision. We can do it either way.
Okay, Mr. Bowden.
Gets mailed to the, you know, the license plate registered person, then that's going to be cheaper in the long run. But I, I think it's negligible, to be honest with you, because they're going down the street anyway.
Okay, thank you.
You have to pay postage, do you? Do you have to pay postage?
Got to pay postage.
Every one you send out, you have to pay postage. Council.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. So then are we, are we saying that it will be moved to 7 or 8 o'clock rather than 5 o'clock with this?
Well, right now, first thing we're doing, I'm probably just going to go down the list or we can do some type of survey to figure out where people are at to kind of come in the middle between where we're at. These are the recommendations, we haven't finalized any part. I think that probably the most pressing priority right now is to take a look at the geographic area right now. And then how long is the equipment, how long is the equipment before it'll be here?
Right, that I don't, I don't have that information, but I will give that.
But it's next year.
So with, with, with most of these vendors, typical turnaround for getting this equipment in is eight to 10 weeks is what they'll tell you. Eight to 10 weeks is what they'll generally tell you.
So that can give us, give us a couple months, you know, it'll be, it's going to get cold here pretty soon. But that'll give us a couple months to try to figure out the other portions of this.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and they probably, my guess is when the pricing came in, they probably gave, submitted some type of timeline, but I'm not sure about that, I didn't see that.
And so, so probably we need to.
So this is just more so for the area and if we want to go forward with the kiosks and things, not the finer details?
We, we, we'll have to work those out though.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Thank you.
We can try to get a post or I can sit here and go free parking, do you want to do free parking all day like some of you? No, it's fine, but if you want to do it.
I was going to say, I asked.
But do you think that's, you know, like, there is a couple of things we need to think about. And one being the question, if it's $13,000 per month on, in addition to what we're paying. And, you know, when we take a look, when we take a look at just parking downtown, what is the average timeframe that someone is downtown? Is it three years, is it you come in and you leave in a few seconds? Are people down here, because if they're not down here for more than three hours, you won't make any money in that geographic area, right? Which further pushes us to trying to recoup that $13,000. Three hours, 90 minutes or whatever it is versus 30 minutes. I mean, right now, we do the, what do you call it, the 15 minutes grabbing, grab and go. We do about 15 minutes, but for a large portion, I think we have a portion of folks that come right in, they grab something and they take off. The lawyer's office. Over here in the governmental area, it's a little bit different, but we really need to think, I mean, I would start with 30, but it's up to council's decision what you want to.
30 minutes?
Yeah, right now, it's, in certain areas, 15 minutes.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
John Fishbeck, when he gave us the presentation, he detailed why he said 90 minutes. And essentially, he said two hours is too long, there, you don't have people staying for that duration in that small period of time. And he said, if you go too short, then you're not encouraging people to come downtown. Where if you have 90 minutes, you're getting that person who might come down for an hour and like, you know, it's just a dollar, I'll stay another hour. You're, you're in that fine line and he detailed it far better than I'm describing right now in his presentation. But he did consider all of those different times and that's why he said 90 minutes was his recommendation.
I know, and that's why I'm saying 30 minutes, because we got to pay for it. But it's your decision though, but, you know, we, I mean, we still, we still have that fee and we have that, you have something?
He also said that free parking doesn't attract people either, so that's another part you have to take into consideration.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Some restaurant owners have expressed, you know, concerns about parking in front of their restaurants. I know when I go out to eat, I think it's, it's typically an hour, 45 minutes depending on the restaurant. So they, they want turnover, they want people in and out of there because, so I, I mean, that's what we have to probably consider is, is that timeframe. Because that's going to be very important for some of these small business, businesses downtown where there's limited parking anyway. And then, you know, they, they want to turn over, they might be open for lunch, their busiest time is from 11 to 1. And if somebody's going to take up an hour and a half of that time, then they're going to miss out on, you know, half of a restaurant being filled.
And someone else, Mr. Mayor, so it, did you have something?
No, no.
So, yeah, I completely agree with, but we, one thing that was really clearly pointed out in both surveys we've had, one with Main Street and Iowa State, Iowa, University of Iowa, and this one is we do not have a dearth of parking. So that's not our issue, our issue is not that we don't have enough parking. We have a perception issue because we're used to being able to see where we're going. But he has a very clear example, people parking at Walmart and walking to Walmart is the same distance of walking the entire downtown.
I think he caught it, I think he caught it, what is it, suburban, what was it? The outskirts or whatever it was, but I think suburbs, suburb.
Suburban mindset in a downtown.
But we need, we need revenue to, yes, sir. Okay, yes, sir.
He, he also said that most people don't mind walking two to three blocks. Right. Which I, I vehemently disagree in Iowa weather. Well, okay. In the winter. We'll just leave that, we'll leave that right on the table. But, you know, Republic's, Republic's budget, what is it, 250, 300,000 dollars a year charges?
It's included in the $13,000 a month.
That's what I meant, I'm, I'm going, I'm going yearly. And, and the only reason I, I say that is, is if we have to generate $560,000 in addition, in revenue in, in parking, we need revenue to maintain our ramps.
Correct.
Yes. And, and our ramps need a lot of work, in my opinion, anyway, if you go into them, they need some work. And they need constant maintenance. And so I think that it's going to be tough to set a rate that we're going to come back. If, if we give 90 minutes of free parking and then most people come down there, if you go to carpenters or morgues or whatever, you're in and out of there in an hour and then you get, you get your free parking, we don't pay a dime, okay? So how we make up that difference is, is going to be, it's going to be a hard sell, I think. Because you're going to have to have some pretty steep rates in order, and a lot of tickets with 90, with 90 minutes of free parking.
We don't want to outprice people from coming down.
Exactly. But we've got to at least break even. Which, I completely agree with you there. And if the council decides to come up with something different, my main push right now is updating our infrastructure so that we have the ability to do what we need to do when we need to do it. So getting the new kiosks and making the enforcement area smaller is, are the, I think the main things that I would personally like to have some confirmation on today. And then, yeah, I, you, you, we have to pay for it. I mean, it essentially does come back down to that, but something that John did say is, parking does need to become its own ecosystem. It needs to become its own economic engine so that it can pay for itself and including those parking ramps. And that's something else we'll have to discuss is, what are we going to do to get people into those parking ramps? And what are we going to do for parking fees for people that are getting tickets? Are we going to increase that fee from $10? Because $10, my first parking ticket in Richmond 15 years ago was $70. I never got a parking ticket again, I'll tell you that. Seven D, seven zero dollars.
So, so have we ever seen some scenarios where you mentioned ramps that we would offer a little bit more timeframe in that ramp? And maybe less, or is it an hour in the ramp versus 30 today?
Was whatever we offered on-street, we doubled it in the ramp. I know Cedar Rapids offers a free hour of parking in the ramps before they charge and they don't do any on-street free parking.
And maybe that's a solution.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
If everybody's done. Two quick questions. The eliminated areas that we're taking out, what percentage of our intake, dollar wise, was, were the, are we eliminating there percentage wise?
Currently, most of them either are, I'm going to guess it's probably not enforced very heavily.
Small, a small number, not a large amount.
There's not a lot of people that park in those areas to begin with.
Cannot going to reduce our, okay. And then the other question I have.
Might see a spike in, in meter revenue coming in because then the meters are working in the right area.
Do, do we know how many people use the ramps versus the parking meters here in town? Is there any way that that was ever tracked? Like when you come from out of town to Waterloo to the convention center or for whatever they're having? Do we know? The reason I ask is because I've lived here my whole life, I've never parked in a ramp.
You should try it out sometime.
Yeah, I mean, I have no desire because I just park on, you know, on the street like I always have. But I don't know what people coming in from out of town are expecting when they come in town. I know most, a lot of cities have parking ramps. But I live in Waterloo, I, I don't, I couldn't even tell you, you know, I know where the ramps are now, but I didn't know where they were, you know, a year ago. Because I never, they were just a ramp. I just wanted to know if we know how many people come from out of town, look for the ramp.
I think that has, we have to have some way, more wayfinding signs up for our ramps.
If, if we're, if we're going to try to direct people to the ramps, we probably need to have some kind of a marketing campaign or. If we're, if we're gonna try to direct people to the ramps, we probably need to have some kind of a marketing campaign or something if if we find that we're not getting people utilizing those.
I know the Convention Center has been, um anytime they have stuff coming in, they've been highly asking people to use the ramps instead of parking on the street.
Okay.
And and that's, that's part of the reason why there's a, whatever the incentive is on the street, it's doubled in the parking ramp. To try to get them there. I I saw one of the oldest signs in history on um where on. Uh Franklin Street for parking, for for ramp. It was the oldest sign in the world. And and I I thought to myself, when I get here on Monday, I'm gonna call somebody and tell them to take that sign down. But we've had conversations too um about signage and wayfinding uh as well. And that's why all of this conversation is part of, part of what you just said, uh encouraging people. Uh to park in the the ramp. And so the thought was uh if there is thirty minutes out here. Then it's an hour or two hours or something like that to incentivize people to utilize it uh more. And we did, um the gentleman from carpenters had come to the council meeting a few months ago. Um just talking about the challenges that he has. It's a blessing that all the people are there and eating, but. Folks can't get in because by the time the conference actually starts or they open up, the spots are already taken. So we've been trying to work with um with Main Street, with Bridges Office and try to move people to the ramps a little bit more.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And and that's why I I, and I've had discussions with Mr. Anderson about this, and we've had discussions, numerous discussions about. You know, uh in our development agreements for downtown when we're gonna have large housing projects. Requiring some sort of parking in in the development agreement. Because if you look at at River Plaza, which I don't know if that's even gonna go through anymore, but you look at the one that's coming on tonight. Seventy-eight apartments, that's at least seventy-eight parking spaces. And we need to be. Moving in the right direction to encourage part of that development agreement that you need to have off-street parking. And the ramp and and then work, work with them to to get them into our ramps. You know, so so that we have a constant census of 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 cars in those ramps that are, that are actually making monthly payments to help support our ramps.
And so I I think what what we, so right now, the enforcement area and the amount of kiosks. That doesn't change right now regardless if we say thirty minutes, none of that changes, right? And so if there was a decision that could be made today, the enforcement area and the kiosk, that's what you would like to know if people had opposed to move on. Right?
And we can bring back and talk about raids and stuff another time.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So if that's the case, then I don't, I don't have an issue with the area of enforcement or the kiosks. The 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 other details I would like to discuss more, but those two things as the way they stand are fine.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
We, we don't, we, we.
We can.
We got a post, though. Folks want to move on and if it, it, it's obvious folks want to buy a kiosk and change the encroachment area.
Okay.
One, one quick question, Mayor, if I may. So so we have decided on the company that's going to put in the kiosk, is that correct? Is that because it's Sourcewell?
Right.
Was it because, I see, I seen there was a, in one of the slides you had. You had done a comparison or a?
Yeah, we had gotten quotes from four different vendors.
Mm-hmm.
Uh one including our own current enforcement company, uh Republic, for different kiosks. And if we were gonna go with theirs, we would have had to have put a RFP out to then invite others. But since there was Sourcewell ones already out there, we went and got quotes from them as well. Just to see what the comparison was for pricing um and equipment and different, like what each model would offer versus the next. Um and IPS came back with the cheapest um hardware, so like the actual kiosk itself, installation and monthly fees. And they also, their um management program where we can go in and see the health, per se, of each kiosk. Um is included in the price. It's not an extra fee.
Just one more thing, sir.
And that, and that fee, that thirteen thousand. Is that fee, is that gonna go up every year, I'm assuming?
That fee is determined or based upon uh credit card transactions. That's what the most of it is. So when the credit card gets run through the kiosk, we would get charged a certain amount that would then go back to, like to pay for the credit card processing.
Yes, ma'am.
New damage to sign. I think we had.
He hasn't spoken yet, though.
How many credit card transactions go into that calculation?
Um they did. Oh shoot, how many was it? You remember how many it was? Um I can get that to you. I'm not sure, offhand. I remember looking at it, but it wasn't.
And and lastly, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with shortening the enforcement area. And you spoke at one of the meetings that I was at that you said that Republic would have the, the manpower to take the old meters out for us. Is that still in effect then too? So no, so the city won't have to deal with, deal with all, all the removal of all those meters on those side streets in. And then you'll take the, the meters that are still functional temporarily and put them places that aren't functional, correct? Okay, thank you.
Is there uh any concrete repair and?
I believe if we had to do any concrete work, Randy had mentioned that his crew could do it for us, depending on the timing.
Well, I just want to make sure we know there may be some participation.
There'll be holes that have to be filled for sure, because they've got bolts in them.
Yeah. Um and lastly, so we'll, we'll come back, we'll have this on. What I would also um like to take a look at uh is our current signage. And I don't know if I work with um uh Vanderwall or, I know we can do some stuff internally too. Uh for the design, but we immediately need to take a look at signage.
Right, yes, absolutely.
All right. Anyone else? All right, I'll take, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Want somebody to say it, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.
You know, it was so ironic that you said that.